I would like to call to order the November meeting of the Mooresville Planning and Zoning Board. If you could join us for the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. Do we have any changes to the agenda?
No, Chairman, there are not.
I will entertain a motion to approve the agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Passage unanimously. Anybody have any changes to the minutes from last meeting? Nope. No changes, I will entertain a motion to approve the minutes.
Motion to approve the minutes.
All in favor? Aye. Rick? Okay. I just want to make sure, just for the record, so. Especially because our planning director is stepping in today to perform Brooke's duties in her absence, so. Okay. So, we can, do we have any public comment? For anything that's general, I do not see anyone here, so we will move on to the work session. So, we have several members of the council here. And the purpose of this is just to talk about general topics, anything that comes up regarding our interface with the council and how we work together. And we have Satish Caramella, who is sort of spearheading this on the council side as well. So, I'll let you go ahead and talk about some things, and we can just go from there.
All right. First of all, thank you for serving in the Planning and Zoning Board. It is one of the most important and shaping our council's future. And it's not easy, a lot of things come to you all, and you all together make the council's life much better. Because many of the questions are already vetted, many of the questions are asked just like what we are thinking. So, and catching things early on before even it comes to us. So, on behalf of our entire council, you know, we are really, really appreciative of holding this position of such an importance and doing fair justice to it. And really thank you, and I am hoping all rest of the council agrees with me on that. But, you know, the purpose of today's meeting was more about as an annual, you know, come talk. And we want to have an open dialogue in understanding from your lens what you're seeing. And we also would like to talk about from our lens what we are seeing and together have some kind of a level set to understand how our future is going to be mapped. So, it's an open dialogue, and I'm open to first listening to you all, what you have for us as a council. And then collectively, we can come back to you all and ask about, are you guys thinking about that? So, with that, I would hand it over to you, Lee, and your team to ask what we are thinking about and what is your question that are keeping you awake?
So, I guess, does anyone have anything we'd like to raise while we're, I mean, the idea of this is more of a sort of free-form, you know, discussion, not necessarily rigid. So, does anyone have any questions or comments?
Who do you?
What do I have? I mean, I think the point of this is to help, you know, in the past, we've had some board members who wanted to interact with the council, which is good, I think. And also to try to understand, you know, they're the elected officials, they are the ones that are passing the ordinances. And, you know, it is helpful, I think, for everyone to kind of understand where they're at, just because we're trying to help, you know, them. And I think it will make everything move a little bit better, but more just it's for any open questions or anything of that nature.
I just ask from your standpoint, what are issues that you have or?
I don't know that I have any specific issues or questions that need to be raised, but, I mean. You know, I mean, I try to at least view a lot of the council meetings, at least in part if I can, sometimes they go a little long. But, you know, to try to help keep up. But, you know, I know one of the things that, you know, we had talked about in the past is, you know, trying to, Satish and I were talking about, you know, potentially getting more like high-tech manufacturing in the area is kind of a focus of some of the council. I know that we've recently hired an economic development person, and I know Michelle can talk a little more about that, or the council members can. You know, with the idea of trying to, you know, aid and recruiting businesses to come to the area. And those are kind of larger aspect-type things, big-picture stuff. Because that's going to take a while to kind of go through, but also we can, if, you know, have questions about the smaller-picture stuff, that is also helpful, so.
If you guys know, I think I can start, I can start some of the conversation, so this will, it'll be useful. So, like for us and on the council, as we see, most of our plans are coming to the end of cycle. When I say, like, you know, parks and recs, it's already six years, in the next two years, we had to come up with a new plan. UDU, you know, the plans are almost, you know, every 10 years we change, the transportation, the CTP is updated every 10 years. And with that in mind, you know, you and us together are seeing things over a period of time. What could have been better to change it? And our main motto is to think about holistically, we're only nine square miles, and we're pretty much built out. And what do we need to do in terms of redevelopment in the future? How do we shape that? And in terms of being in the forefront of all this economic development that is coming into Wake County, how can we be ahead of the curve? You know, location, no one can beat us, you know, and we are the only town in the entire Wake County is where we have 50% and 50%. And we got to give a lot of credit to the businesses for helping us from their tax dollars that are helping 50% of the, you know, actually 100% of the people they're supporting, but hardly they get much out of it, including trash. So, from that point of view, you know, we are very, very strategic in ensuring that we get high-tech jobs, which are good-paying, and ensuring we are having the skill set levels. I think Wake Tech partnership has worked out really good, because not everyone can, you know, do a master's degree. So, the Wake Tech has been really good partners with that. So, I, the reason I'm talking about all these things is that is what keeps me awake is our, we are growing at the rate of 3% to 4% in the tax revenue every year, and I don't know till how long it will continue. And, and our demands of, you know, and ensuring that we give quality services to the people, the cost of, you know, expenses are also going. Like standard inflation is more than 20%. So, what do we need to do? So, I wanted to open up on that area that you all feel and have opened up.
Yeah, yeah. This is supposed to be exactly, just pretty loose chat, yeah, yeah. Like anything.
I'm interested in kind of what the long-term vision is specifically for like parks and rec and green space. My feeling personally is that we have a lot of that for the size of, I mean, the size of the town. We utilize it all the time, I have little kids, so we love it, but it seems like there's a lot of money going towards that and trying to identify like new areas, which surprises me a little bit, so I'm just kind of curious, like, what's the long-term? Like, are we still trying to buy up more land for that, or are we just trying to develop what we already have?
Excellent question. I think what in our master plan of parks and recs that we were given last year, I can't remember, but they said you need almost 100 acres of parks and recs, open space land. Additional than what we had. So, four years ago, I think right around when the Apple campus was getting announced, we all went into a closed session and said, hey, look, So, like, a good conscious effort was made, and Brandon was leading that. And he basically collected all the parcels in the entire town that could be used for potential parks. And then started going behind, you know, had hired a broker and started going, working with it. So, outcome of that, it was also coinciding with the bond money that we were going. So we had to be ahead of the game and wanted to use more company. Was one of those kind of things that we, how many, I think it's around 15? Michelle, do you know how many acres? Acres, but that, that area was very specifically and intentionally picked up, because it butts aside with the Wake County land. And they are ready to give us on like a lease for $1 a year kind of a thing, just so that, and our council's original idea and still is, is how to develop that area in the future, like a ballpark. Because the lake that is around it, and, but right now, we are having, we're locking in the properties around it to ensure that we, for in future, we have that whole area developed. And that was one. And then we are spending a lot of money on downtown for land, you know, for the town green. Then the other place, we are also buying 10 acres next to the Church Street Open Space. That was Wake County. And then we were very fortunate to get land next to Wake Tech, where the Wake County Schools was not able to, basically, because of the flight over path, you know, airport overlay, they could not use that. They could use only half of the 50 acres, the 25, 30 acres they have given us as a lease for, I think, 10, 20 years or something, like, you know, and for open space. So, we are collecting, grabbing anything that we can get right now, because needless to say, Morrisville are buying land close to $1 million an acre. So, so that is the reason we are running behind, getting as much land as possible and develop. Once we have, you know, site control, we can always go back and develop it.
And that 100 acres that you were talking about, that's based on like a consultant saying?
Consultant study.
Size, the geographic size, or the population?
Combination of all, I don't, to be honest, we were not that savvy to ask this kind of a question at that time. But the only thing we were told was 100 acres, that was alarming in like a nine-square mile. You know, where it's almost getting built, we need more land for parks. And we do not know the new study, what it says, you know, like, but that was based on that study, that they said.
Yeah, from like community outreach and stuff, do you feel like that is really something that, like, citizens of the town want money spent on? Is that?
It's pretty much the top of every.
It's top of every, everything. After transportation, you know, parks is the key, you know, where people.
Like new parks, additional park space?
I meant to say, like, for example, I forgot to say, the Church Street South Lot, you know, was, we had to literally go behind the person who was there, you know, Todd Wright or previous town manager. And then Brandon, he was deputy at the time, had to go everywhere to secure that five acres. And outcome of that, Perceivance has given us nine practice pitches, four basketball courts and two volleyball courts, which will be heavily used and a huge shelter. So, so yes, there is a demand of people wanting more and more. And as, and also seen a trend, Cary, on West Cary side, there's less area. So, from the statistics I have been told, once the first preference is given for our Parks and Recs, you know, like to the, for our residents and the non-residents, the non-residents fill up very quickly. So, which clearly shows this area, it has a demand of more programming and also where do we use those?
Has there been any conversation with Cary about what they're doing? And because I think you're exactly right, West Cary is not a particularly park-heavy area. Are they working on that? I mean, I know that's outside of your control, but just.
No, no, actually, it's a good question, because unfortunately, I know the answer to that. They had put a $500 million bond, which failed. And otherwise, they were having big plans on West Cary side to go all-in. And so, like, there's, there's a lot of expansion going on at basketball, USA Basketball, about baseball. Almost broke that area that wanted to develop vague, but they are looking at every opportunity. They have developed C T P a lot. So, and also like, in, as part of the study too, I was reminding Brandon, Jerry Allen told us, they work very closely to ensure that we are not repeating the same kind of sport. For example, C T P, you know, it is good, so you don't want one more C T P in Morrisville. It's so close areas, so like, and the same way. Cary Tennis Park. Cary Tennis Park. And, and the same way, like, where I heard, like, some rumbling about cricket and all those things. And I reminded Brandon, go tell Cary the same thing, you know, we are working on cricket, so we don't want competition around that same area. So, and that is a kind of a thing that the, both the Parks and Recs and their things, they try to ensure they are cohesive and not competing.
No, Satish answered it well. I was going to add, but he, he got to it. Our, our parks are used heavily.
Yeah, no, no disagreement there at all. I mean, I'm one of the users, for sure. I think it does just kind of surprise me sometimes when there's so much money spent on, like, new, developing new parks. And just thinking about like, are, are we going to have to increase taxes again? I mean, I know that that passed last time, but overwhelmingly, people were not happy about it, citizens. So, are we, is that going to have to continue to be able to keep up the pace of the park investment?
That's a good, yeah. Go ahead, go, go ahead.
Go ahead, and then I'm going to follow up.
That's a good segue to, I had three issues I want to talk about. One is, but I'm going to tie it into your question. So, I think part of the issue that we have is we want to be sensitive to people not wanting it, that their taxes go up. We approved five cents above revenue neutral. But I think it's also important to look at the kinds of revenue we can generate through good development. We've had a number of rezonings come before the council. We have lack of workforce housing. We have residents that are concerned about too many apartments. But when we approve these developments, like for Park West, for example, that would bring in about $800,000 to our parks fund. So, I think we have to, as a staff and a council and residents, understand that if people don't want their taxes to come up, that we have to approve certain development. And that's where I think it's been challenging, is, you know, when we have a lot of rezonings. We, we did the U D O, and we had, here's where you can build apartments. And then, then developers come back and say, well, this isn't working, so we want to come back with more apartments. So I think it's really important for the planning board in Morrisville to realize that we're reaching a point very quickly where we're not going to be able to grow anymore, and we're going to have redevelopment. So I just want to bring that up as something of like, you know, when we, when we approve development, we get revenue into our parks money.
When we, let's be very clear, only, only from residential.
Residential.
Only, otherwise, we are not like commercial, we are not getting any. And I don't know, actually, we, in the last budget, we also increased our parkland payment in lieu. I think Michelle, you know, was very instrumental, because we were not charging them enough, in my opinion. And so, we did go to a level that was decent, and otherwise, this is a legislative power that has been given to us. If we misuse it, we'll lose it, so.
What I'm trying to say is that development, in many ways, can bring in the revenue we need without having to increase taxes. But if we don't do it, if we don't do it, then we're going to have to, the revenue is going to have to come from somewhere. Right? I mean, in terms of building.
Or you just don't spend it. I mean, if I don't, if I want to buy something, but I don't make enough money to buy it, I just don't buy it.
Yeah, that's the other option. And then, so I think that's just an issue that we have to deal with. The other two issues that I want to talk about tonight or just bring to your attention is, you know, we have, you know, housing prices are skyrocketing. Housing prices are skyrocketing. I'm talking to a lot of people in Morrisville that are leaving apartments, because they can't afford to live here. So, but we have an affordable housing plan, but we're not really execute, I don't think we're executing on that. So we still, it's still an issue that we need to have. And so I don't know how we address that. And then, office vacancies. So, this is going to be like perimeter park, which used to be sold out. When you go out there, it's completely empty. So that's going to be the next wave of people coming in, saying, how do we redevelop it? People aren't coming back to work after COVID, four years after the pandemic. And so, I think that's going to be an issue moving forward. Tying that to our Economic Development Director we've hired, you know, how, you know, how this council and the zoning advisory committee come up with visions for, you know, how we want that to be. And then the strip malls and everything, when we're competing with the Fenton and we're competing with downtown Cary, you're now going to start seeing less and less people going to the strip malls. So, Park West is the beginning. Now we're going to see what's going to happen with, where the other cinema is, with the food line and everything. And then you're looking at McCrimmon Corners. So people are wanting, and we're working on the town center, but I could tell you that any of us that go out to dinner with our families, we want to go to a park, we want to walk, we want to go downtown. We don't want to just go to a strip mall, eat dinner and leave. So this is going to affect all of us in the next, you know, immediate future, right? So I think these are just some issues that we have to think about.
There's the immediate, but there's also the mid to long-term, which we need to think about too.
That's what I meant.
Yeah, because, yeah, exactly, we need to be prepared for this stuff that's going to hit in five years, 10 years. And that's part of the park stuff too, is that, but bringing up the, the office building thing. Obviously, a lot of our office parks developed in an area directly below the flight path, and that's why they developed in that area. But I know we have recently, you know, well, recently, a few years ago, changed and started to allow multifamily in, in some of those areas. I, I guess we do need to think about, you bring up perimeter parks specifically, but like, what would happen if people wanted to redevelop that area into a residential-type development? You know, what kind of things we would want to see in that?
And that's what, that's why I brought up the point, because that, that's going to happen much sooner than we think. Someone is going to come and want to redevelop that into residential or something, and we have to have that conversation now before it comes to us, and then we are in a situation where we don't want to approve it, and then.
Right, but I think part of that conversation has to be that we, that I think that we have more than our share of rental properties in Morrisville. And if we're going to develop perimeter park into, into residential, I don't want to see that become apartment buildings, blocks of apartment buildings. I mean, at the very least, I would love it, of course I would, if it could be developed into nice, single-family homes that were, that you could buy in Morrisville when I moved here. You know, a starter home, a, you know, a cute little three-bedroom that was, you know. I, I would love to see that. I, I'm told that they're just not developing that anymore. But even if it has to be an apartment-type footprint, you know, I want us to be reaching out, or I want us to at least be looking for developers that are willing to do above the line of affordable housing and that are willing to look at a condo situation, if they're going to do an apartment footprint, and that are going to, are willing to do townhouses instead of giant apartment buildings. I mean, I think, I think we don't have a ton of land, like, we're not Cary. They, I mean, they're putting apartments all over the place. We're not them. And if we don't draw the line and let developers know what it is that we want, what it is that we're willing to approve, because, I mean, I, I think it must be frustrating for them when they talk to, you know, they talk to the planning department, and they talk to P Z B, and they have, you know, they have a, a plan for 300 apartments, and they come to council, and I, and there's no scenario in which I'm going to vote for that. So, you know, I, I think that it would be great to kind of get on the same page about, about the percentage of our, of our residential that's rented, and the percentage of our residential that's helping people to build generational wealth, if it's affordable housing, and, and the percentage. I, I want people to be, you know, I don't want, and we're not going to get, people to rent forever in Morrisville. And I don't want a transient population that rents here for two years and then buys a house in Apex. Rents here for, you know, until they can afford to buy a house in Cary. So, that's, I mean, that's something that I think about a lot, is that I, you know, I feel like just because developers want to build apartments, doesn't mean that we have to accept apartments.
So, what, what about the affordable housing? Like, I think you mentioned that, and Anne, you just mentioned it, like, what is the plan for that? Because when I think about affordable housing, if they start building single-family homes, then, I mean, we're, we're already out of the range of 95% of people. I'd love, I would love to see more single-family homes too, but then like, so what are the options going to be for that? I mean.
I think you're 100% correct at, for me, oh, go ahead, sorry.
No, no, go.
No, we got to be very cognizant of what is happening around us, you know. I say that very cautiously, because if you look, what is, what was R T P, you know, known for all, you know, office spaces and everything, with R T P two plan, every place can be built for, in our housing too. And I don't think any single families are coming there. So, they will be, you know, everyone wants to maximize it. And to do it, for coming back to question on your question, which is the most important for me too, is when we talk about affordable housing, for me, I say, let's consider affordable housing in two ways. Medium income of Morrisville residents is close to 100, 120,000, something around that.
115 was the last.
115 was the last.
But that's from Morrisville, that's not A M A for Wake County.
Yeah, so, so, so 115. A town home, from my knowledge, I have been told, like a new one, I'm taking, is almost 650. And a single family is close to a million. To be eligible for a loan, you need three times your salary. So, if you say 600,000 house, you will still not be eligible. The guy who's making 120 or a median, 120 is not. So, that bothers me a lot, because when we came to rates, I bought my house, Public Data, at 224, you know. And my salary was, at the time, in the seventies, at this one, very barely, three times salary, I was able to put some downtown, and a down payment, I was able to afford it. Now that is not possible, and no developer, and there's very less land left where they are interested to even venture. They know the cost is, is like close to 1.3, 1.4 million to have nice, single-family homes. While I agree with Anne, I'm a data analytics guy. And I'm seeing a continuous trend of being transient over the last eight years of our, I know, I can only say from water, water data. People are continuously who are having homes, or they're starter homes. Families get big, they can't afford, they are like paying off their house, renting it, moving it to 27519 or Cary or Apex. So, it is not just apartments, which is transient. Breckenridge, 1140 homes, I can tell you more than 400 rentals now, so.
Right, but the thing is that right now, when you're, I'm sorry, Rick, I know you had a comment, let me just say this though. That right now, when you're, you're selling your, or you're paying off your Breckenridge home, and you're moving, you're not moving necessarily to Cary. Like, the development is going further out, and that affordable houses are moving further and further out. Yeah, I mean, you're, yeah, I mean, you're, you live in, yeah, you're living, you're not, you're not paying off your house and then buying a house in Cary with cash, like.
Yeah, so what I'm trying to come down is that, and that is level one of affordable housing. Level two is true 80% A M I. I feel really, I don't even know how they can manage to stay in Morrisville, to be honest. I feel really, I don't even know how they can manage to stay in Morrisville, to be honest. You know, all these high end apartments they're making and all kinds of stuff. Eighteen hundred, twenty-two hundred is minimum for an, I don't know, one bedroom. I don't know. It's been a long time. So I'm really concerned about both these things. How do we ensure our area is affordable? And I'm not saying Park West, not, uh, like perimeter. That's huge investments have been made, like if those are class A buildings. What is the best use that can be used without some retrofit or something? And are we ready for some rezoning? Um, that you can do life sciences or you can do advanced manufacturing or sales kind of things instead of completely flipping the whole area. Um, and that is why if having this economic development, um, Beverly McCran is so important for us to get in a plug and usually the chamber does it, but now we have in-house who will continuously look at it. So.
Oh, my turn?
Yes, don't.
Are you sure?
Not yet, but I'll let.
No, 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 go ahead. Use a restroom and come back in. All right. Now, I think the biggest thing is first of all, there's misnomer with affordable housing. Everybody thinks it's low income or section eight housing. It's affordable housing. You've got people in Morrisville that have been here for years and gave to this community and they can't afford to stay here, but they have a sense of community. So I think from a council standpoint, it's about appreciating the people with sense of community. If it's all the dollars, that's great. And that's where they're going overall. Is you're going vertical, but the roads aren't changing. The roads aren't getting wider or anything else, but you're going higher. And that's great with things. And I think you need to take a look at that aspect of it. Michelle, not to put you on the spot, can I ask you a question? The, the, the project you're looking at with affordable housing, how many units is that? Roughly.
So the partnership with half time for community.
Twelve, eleven, eleven units.
And Wake, Wake County, when we had our joint meeting? Yeah. 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 And I think that's a great thing that you're doing. But when Wake County was here and we had a joint meeting at the same table, the deficit was 1100 units short, 1100 units short. But yet we're going for what's going to bring us the most taxes in. And no disrespect, I was a councilman. I understand what you're looking at, but there's got to be a balance with some of this stuff. There really has to be a balance with what you're looking at. And you've got some big projects coming up. Satish, TJ, Steve, Liz, Liz, is you got TOD and everything else. And you've got to deal with that traffic and that construction. You know what I'm saying? And I know everybody's trying to work on the roads, but I'm sure everybody comes over here and takes a look at it and see that type of the thing. The other thing I think from planning and zoning, take a look at is tree canopies. Take, how, do we really count the trees when we clear the land? And open up an urban heat sink? Even though you know, don't think it's an urban heat sink, believe you can say anything you want to do on this. I appreciate that. And don't plant it in a field five miles away. But the urban heat sink is right where it's at. How do you replace that part of it? You know, you've got communities like Apex and all these other ones looking at that. Why aren't we doing more involved with that? You know, I'm not necessarily a tree hugger, but I believe if you take it down, you put it back in some capacity. But don't just look at the tax dollars. Don't go vertical. It affects fire departments, police departments, how they act and interact, getting into those communities. You know? Unless you want to create like an Atlanta or something like that, people don't want to go there. And they're going to move north. They're going to move to the northern tier from us as long as they've got internet and things.
Can you tell me, Rick, what specifically you're talking about when you're saying, don't go vertical? Are there specific projects you have on? I feel like we're always resisting going vertical. So what are you specifically talking about?
Well, Park West is one, I think. I will, I'll bring it up. I have no problem with that. I think Park West, that, that, that original concept was entertainment. And you've got a dead end in that street right there.
I mean, the original.
Hold on, excuse me, excuse me.
Vastly more than it is now.
Well, yeah, it was, it was. But just overall, it's dead spots there with that part of it. And you've got some things coming on the board, like the TOD, um, McCrimmon and everything up there. And who knows what's going to go on that? I know there's a plan for a flyover and everything with it, but it's, what's the impact going to be on a small street, church street with all those people living, Get Creek and now all those other areas of what it's going to do. And I think that's a big thing. I think people take a look at the property and review of it. And I think more responsibility should be on planning and zoning, say, have you considered these things and bring these things up? To take a look at that part of it and say, what's going to happen when we put these in and how many people are going to be there with that part of it? I think everybody wants Morrisville to be a great area. I do, or I wouldn't be here. And I think it's important to me, or I wouldn't be involved as much as I am with stuff. I think it's a great community. It's great things here to do it. But I think we've got to take a look at some of these areas and breaking them down and really focus on impact and not just say, oh, we're going to rubber stamp this and do this and go here with this and that type of the thing. I think we've got to see what's a human aspect with it. Do you agree?
If, if I may, if I could, um, react to some of what we just heard. You all were also integral to the land use plan update. You'd agree with that. So I think that we all came together around the concept of going vertical and in three spaces in town. The McCrimmon corridor, we limited that to, I think, three large apartment complexes. Is that right? Along McCrimmon corridor. TOD, which we were a little behind the eight ball there because someone had already purchased some of the property. So they grandfathered in some uses that we don't want and town center. So at this point, those are the only areas that can be by right going vertical. That's why Park West has to come to this body.
Well, I think part of that too, with that TOD was the study on Church Street. What's the impact?
Yeah, and I think.
How are you going to relieve that? That's part of that.
And, and we delayed the TOD UDO update to learn that the improvements for the McCrimmon flyover will reach back to Church Street and help that intersection.
Won't help Church Street.
So that's, that's to be seen over time. And yes, Church Street is not getting widened in any meaningful way, just right near the intersection. But hopefully we'll be able to flow traffic through that area a little bit better than what's happening now. So that's kind of, I think we're all kind of together on that. And I was hoping that this meeting of us could sort of get an idea of whether or not, are we simply enforcing the rules with this group? Or are we looking more like the council does? Um, kind of bigger picture, is this what the town and the residents want for the future? And, um, I've always been encouraging of empowering this group to do that. Cause when I first got on the council, I was on the short end of a number of one, six votes. And there's been times here where one person disagrees with the group. And when you share those reasons, um, that's really important that they make it into the notes. Because we often get something and it's like, oh, it passed four, one. What did the one dissenter say? Why was that an issue? Cause some of us can't come to all the meetings. I know Liz comes to a lot of your meetings. And I have in the past, but I haven't been able to recently. So it's really helpful to make sure that the thoughts are captured, the discussion about why, and cause, uh, Mayor Potem mentioned it, you're pre-vetting everything for us. You're making our life easier so we don't have to reinvent the wheel every time. So when you guys have really robust discussions, um, it helps us and it's sort of, it's a shortcut for us. So, um, I think we're all kind of level set in that we have the land use plan. And we should always be leery about upzoning anything. Cause that's a big decision, because land use plan maybe should be. We change things sometimes when the development community tells us, well, that doesn't work for life sciences, for example. Some people might come back and say, this doesn't work for high tech. And I think that some of the council might be amenable to changing again to meet high tech needs. So you guys are like the first cut at all of that. So, um, what do you guys, what do you all see as your role? I guess is the question. How do you view what you're doing to help us?
You know, I see it as us just being advocates for the town, just like you guys are. Um, I've been on the board for a few years now, and I think the last couple of board meetings, uh, where we've discussed things like Park West and the town center have been some of the most robust meetings that I've attended. And I think, you know, we've done a good job of really trying to dig into the details and find out, you know, what's the cost of this? What's the town's investment in it? Things of that nature so that we are, you know, trying to make sure the town is using its money wisely. Just getting back a little bit to the park, you know, debate. Everybody here obviously wants green space. My kids don't use it anymore. They don't use the schools anymore, but I'll gladly pay taxes to have good schools and nice parks. But every acre that's devoted to a park is another acre that's not available for development. Whether it's be low income residential or commercial that brings in the revenue that allows us to invest in the parks and everything else. So, I mean, it's just like everything. It's a push and pull. And, you know, you guys have a tough job. There's so many competing interests. And, you know, I just see the board, um, as just trying to be, you know, good stewards of the, the tax pay money and making sure that Morrisville gets what they pay for. And I think, you know, we've come very close to turning down, I think, some big projects. And, um, they've been close votes, I think, but, um, you know, that, that's democracy.
I think there's several projects that I believe that, you know, our discussions changed in a pretty substantive way that I think made the projects better, especially for the surrounding residents. Even if we didn't turn it down, there's a couple I can think of where we, you know, we did affect change, you know, voluntary or, or not, or whatever. You know, so I guess.
Can I comment on number of units? Since we talked a little bit about Park West.
I haven't heard anything from you the whole time I've been here.
I know, I'm quiet today. Um, transit. So when we talked about Park West, I was thinking in my head total number of units, which I know is important from the land use plan. So we haven't been involved in the transit district. So in my head, I'm thinking total number of units. We need revenue now. It was subtraction in my mind because it wasn't adding 300 units. It was saying, oh, maybe transit orient. We have all of this construction. We probably won't have a train. It could easily relocate there now. Plus it's a very unique development. And I can share, I used to live there when I first moved to Morrisville. And it presented a feel like a city to people that moved into this community. I picked it without seeing it online because it looked like a city. So of all of the other rentals that are around for somebody that's relocating into an area and you go online and you see retail with some apartments above it, really nice amenities inside and a walk, a safe walking area and an elevator. You think, okay, that's easy for me. The rest of them depends more on the people. This is a community. So sometimes I lean certain ways on high density because I spent my entire life in high density. So I lived in filthy, dirty little apartments when you have no money. Gradually you get nicer apartments, but it's always been apartment or condo. So it's, it's for me, it's always been how much square footage? Who's managing that building? Who do I live with? And then I always liked the flexibility of they bought a big dog. I'm moving buildings. And so that's a lifestyle of people that work at a lot of the big companies. They don't pay relocation packages like they used to. They want you to rent. Because they know this is maybe R and D and you're going to move upward. You're going to have to move to a headquarters location. So the high density and the vertical doesn't bother me because I'm from a city. So it's, sometimes I bring a different viewpoint and it's from that background of always living in high density. And it's just a matter of number of units, not necessarily should they be in Park West or should they be in transit oriented? Same number of units is what I was thinking. So it wasn't necessarily, let's add a bunch of units. I, I liked it, but you know, that's town council, but I thought I'd at least share why I leaned towards adding it.
I, a hundred percent, you know, come with the same thought process. Coming from Mumbai, population is 21 million people. And 10 million people use public transportation. Population of North Carolina is 10 million. So you can see every time, you know, North Carolina moving to left to right every day. And there's no luxury of having a single family in Mumbai. It's only condos and that to do rented is an act of God, you know, like, uh, so when I came with two suitcases to Marswell or like 54, 55, where I was staying, apartment was my first base. I didn't, I can't even think or imagine buying a house at that time or anything because for me, my apartment is my house. And that is pretty much where I lived 90% of my life before coming here. And, uh, 800 square feet, thousand square feet. That's, that's how I grew up. But, uh, things are different here. So you've got to adapt. But how much ever I say, people are coming in, you know, uh, right now it was 63. Now the last I was talking to someone, it's 57 people every day coming into Wake County. And, uh, jobs are, um, the best places that, you know, RTP is able to offer them. A lot of freshers out of Ohio, Minnesota, like, you know, biotech people are just coming, you know, they just don't care. They just have good salaries. Midwest is not able to offer them and our area is able to offer them. So also thinking in that point of view, not trying to say like, we have a fair share or not a fair share. We don't have a fair share of a good blend of mix. I'll say that because many people told me they want to stay in Morrisville, but they could not get beyond a starter home. And Preston was too old for them at that time because that was like level higher. So we did not have that stock. And we are facing the blunt of it because next, if they want to go to a higher house, they can't live in Marsville anymore. So, so, uh, it's, it's something we started at the time, but we didn't look at the big picture. Having live and retire in Marsville. That's not a trend anymore.
Respectfully, Satish, I don't, I don't actually think that's true. Because, so my daughters are, they're renting a townhouse. Okay. But the townhouse, had they bought it, it's a four bedroom townhouse. It's 2,500 square feet. It's, we lived with five kids, me and my husband and my mother-in-law in 700 square feet in Princeton. I mean, it's not that if they're, I mean, it's not that you, if we were to build townhouses, to me, that's an acceptable compromise. Because, you know, I, some of the townhouses, God, are nicer than the house I have now, frankly. And, you know, that to me is an acceptable compromise. You know, if it can't be single family detached, I get it. Like I'll, you know, I'm not going to die on that hill. But yeah, I do think that we should be, you know, that we should be making it known that we want some stock for sale. We want some stock that people can buy and stay in. I mean, you can stay in a four bedroom townhouse forever. Most, uh, most families can, I mean, not mine obviously, but you know, most families can stay in a four bedroom townhouse forever. It's not that there's, it, we just, I just think we leap too quick to the apartment and we, you know, and that's just, it's, it's, to me, it's not, it's not great for a number of reasons. Infrastructure is one, population is one, resources are another one. And so, I mean, I just think that we, I just think it would be good if we were all on the same page about that.
I mean, I'll be very honest, it's not about, I'm a developer here. I, I have nothing to do with apartments. I have nothing to do with single family or town home, but I'm looking at the trend. People don't want to invest in a small community to, like in an acre, the yield is only five single home. You, like, like four, four town, uh, four, seven townhomes in an acre might be. And there might be more than that. So, so eight, nine, I don't know, like, and like, might be four or five town, uh, single family or something like that. The yield is not coming for them. So it's not like we are, don't want to do it. From a business point of view, they just don't want to do it.
Well, I, I was gonna say, so, I mean, we are, we sort of scheduled this to go to 7:30, which doesn't have to be that, but so we've got 10-ish more minutes. Is there a way that we can craft some language in the UDO? Is there a way that we can craft some language in the UDO given the sort of whatever restrictions we have with the state that would favor more townhome development or some sort of novel-type development? Like, one, one of the things that's recently just come in this area is this two-over-two concept where they have, it's sort of a townhome, but there's like a one townhome below, another townhome above. So you have just a little bit more height than like your, say, a three-story townhome, which is pretty common in Morrisville. But you can get two units in that same area. The top one can have a rooftop.
Accessory dwelling.
No, this is.
One separate in the back.
Well, that's another whole thing. That's another whole thing that we could do in certain areas, but this is a specific sort of townhome-type situation where instead of a three-story, it's a four-story and you've got like, say, two, two on the top, two on the bottom. So, I mean, I don't know if that's really, we've never really addressed that specifically in the UDO, but like, I, I don't know if there's a way to, because we don't have that much land left, but is there some sort of creative way that we could write a UDO requirement that would favor that or help that move along that, as sort of as you were saying?
Go ahead, Michelle.
Okay. From a land use perspective, you can regu-, you could regulate the type of housing. So if it's detached, single-family, if it's a townhome, if it's multifamily, you legally cannot get into the ownership structure. So ownership versus rental is not something that we are legally allowed to consider. Um, so we could say we want multifamily. We can't distinguish, um, apartments versus condos or single-family detached that's owner-occupied versus rented, townhomes that are owner-occupied versus rented. But we can distinguish between the types of housing, um, just not the ownership structure. I'm not completely familiar with HOAs, but they do a lot of things that government can't do. They seem to have some broad discretion.
So, uh, so we have had, um, I think, some really creative language to allow for this creative kind of development and you, um, accessory ADUs, accessory dwelling units. We've, we've allowed that in our code forever and yet nobody has ever come forward. We have, um, bungalow concepts where folks could come in and build, um, small kind of cottage styles, um, for-sale homes, and those products have never come. So I, I think Satish hit on something when he talked about, you know, we can all wish whatever we want, but if there's not some, because we don't build. The town of Morrisville doesn't build except for our parks and our own, um, public facilities. So if there's not somebody out there that's willing to come in and take advantage of the creativeness in our UDO, there, I don't, you know, there's nothing we can do about it.
Let me ask you a question with that. With your eat, your economic development director, coming from that viewpoint, can they, can they? Can they take a look at not just only dealing with the commercial aspect of it, but also take a look at getting the word out and promoting the ideas of some of these things? Not promoting them on behalf of the council, but just saying these are available for innovative components. Cause Morrisville's known for innovation, smart and whatever, and you've got 3 million square feet of biotech on the creme now, plus, coming. See, I don't think you have to worry about that right now because no one has any leases on any of those buildings.
Well, hopefully, hopefully that's to come.
Hopefully, that's gonna change.
But, um.
But, yeah, I'm just thinking.
Yeah, so I think it's important to talk about the economic development position and what, what councils, why we went down that way and, and put that, um, out there in this year's budget. Because we do believe there's, there's opportunities out there and then nobody has a crystal ball, but you, you need, somebody needs to have their ear on the ground to understand what's coming in the area, what opportunities may be coming and that we take advantage of them. And so that's why council invested in this economic development position. And, um, the other thing we've also invested in is a small business person as well, who we haven't hired yet, but, um, um, because we believe that that's important too, to understand what the small business community needs, because that's very different than the large, um, Lenovo's and the other, um, PPD and the other big companies we have out there. So, um, so, yeah, I think, I think the economic development position is gonna be key. And, and let me, now that, I want to say one other thing. I wanted to say this before. Ken said something really important. There's a lot of push and pull and we do balance a lot. There's a lot we balance. We're talking here about development and about parks and rec and amenities because this is a planning and zoning board and those are the things you work on that are so critically important and that help us tremendously because you do so much groundwork before it gets to us that you give us the ability then to push a little bit more. So what you do is really critically important, but we also look at operational expenses. Um, we look at, you know, staffing issues. We look at police and fire and all that is critically important to have a great community. And so, um, so revenue is really important to us because we don't want to put that on the backs of the residents all the time. We want to have commercial development that is subsidizing our residents so that we can keep, which I think is still a relatively low tax rate when you look across the county and the triangle. Um, I know we did this last budget, we did not make some people very happy. I understand that. I'm one of them and my husband's one of them. I still hear about our tax bill from him.
Same.
But, um, but we're been, we have been incredibly fortunate in all these years to keep our tax rate as low as it is because we have such a strong commercial, um, part of town and we will always have that. And Satish touched on this in the beginning too, that redevelopment is critically important to this town and the future of this town and how we can try to keep things as affordable as we can. They are not affordable. I'll be the first one to tell you that too, but it could be astronomically worse. And so, um, redevelopment is gonna be critically important, making sure that we're paying for the best and the brightest to work in this town because those are the people that do the work. The seven of us that come in here and you all, um, we make lots of recommendations, but they're the ones that do the work day in and day out. So, um, all that is really important and it is a balance. And I think we do balance a lot of this. We try really hard and we all disagree all the time. Um, and that's a good thing too. If you had seven people that thought the same way, I would be frightened. I would be very frightened, so.
But also Liz, further to your point, we had one of the lowest, I mean, yes, everyone was very upset about tax increases. My husband also, you know, still hearing about it, but we had one of the lowest tax increases in Wake County. I mean, carry went up 14 cents. There were a lot of towns that capitalized on that rese-, revaluation far, far more than we did. And one of the reasons is because we agonized over people for whom it would not be affordable if we went up more. There was more that we wanted to do. There was more that we felt was vital that we do, that we are not doing, you know? And I just, I mean, I feel like it's important to say that because, you know, like, talking about like, are we spending too much money on this or that or, you know, people that can't afford to live here? We are so cognizant of that and we struggle with that all the time and the whole thing is a huge balancing act. And, you know, and we do the best that we can and we don't make everybody happy for sure, but I really do feel like, you know, especially this past budget, I feel like we, we straddled that line really well.
I know we are almost touching time, but we may try to extend 10 more minutes and then do it. But I would, so these kind of discussions can go on for hours.
Yes.
So, so, um, and these are good discussions, you know, but I wanted to use this opportunity. What is that we both together committees, your committee and ours, council can work together in areas that both of us don't have expertise? Redevelopment, it's all new for us. You know, we didn't think it would come to that stage. Um, if you think it is worthwhile to have some kind of a joint, um, meeting with someone who has done redevelopment, um, and has an expertise of how things are done, you know, a house of living is good, but at least they can give us more kind of thing because I need some kind of a knowledge to even being sitting, sometimes I sit on that chair without even having knowledge what I'm approving, I'll be honest, because you guys are making our life easy, but I want you also to have that kind of knowledge. If you don't, what can the staff help us in getting the right, right kind of knowledge so that you can make the right decisions for us?
That would be a good idea. I mean, it's better to be prepared ahead of time.
Yeah.
When this thing's hit, so, I mean, did you have some?
Yeah, no, I mean, I think in redevelopment, I mean, I think, well, to answer your question for workforce, affordable housing, the most, the, the most proactive way to do it is by partnering with developers because, you know, we've tried, we're trying to advocate for many, but all costs, much money, we're not allocating a certain person at a tax rate yet. We have an affordable housing plan, so, but the problem is that most developers only want to do it the multi-family, so even though we have these other options. So that's kind of how we have to weigh the decision, but if we had had a unit, you know, Park West, we negotiated 15% of the units for 30 years, that would be 40 units. And then if another developer came and that became the standard, it's another 40 units and the next thing you know, Morrisville has more units. And I think it does matter because $700 or $800 less, someone would have to pay for a place. And, I mean, that's a lot in terms of groceries and everything, especially with the prices and times we're living in. Last thing I'll say is redevelopment, I think, being creative, I love this idea of bringing in someone that has experience with redevelopment, like, for example, Box Yard. That's an amazing place in RTP that was just empty office spaces.
You need to speak more.
More office spaces. And now, now it's, um, you know, an activated center that's bringing in everybody in and it was just an abandoned office building. So that may be something that we can look at is going back with some ideas so that they have other options rather than just, well, we're gonna come in and do multifamily because that's what they know. And we know that it ma-, that makes them money. It's about revenue. They have to make, these developers have to make, they're in the business of making money.
And, and, and I'll tell you one good example of, we were very cognizant about sustainability and so we had the stubbings for the EV. And that did not go very well with the apartments, um, association and others because I still hear about that and why did you do it? But it is the right thing to do. Uh, you're stubbing for the future. So in the same way, I feel, um, about affordable housing, if there is a bill from your side and obviously our side is amend the UDO right off the back because you are getting TOD, you're getting other things, we buy right. Even before they come in, what can we incorporate as part of the UDO? That's a standard protocol, you know? We don't have to beg, borrow, hey, we'll give you 5% affordable housing or 10% of this one. Set it as a standard as part of the UDO and let, like the same way we do the EVs so that you come, it's not a question of compromise here or like, you know, this one, it is what it is if you want to stay and do stuff here. I think those are the kind of things I'm looking, you know, from Michelle and others who can help us, okay, make this call. I'll do it right now, like, from my, from my point of view.
So I'm gonna play devil's advocate for a minute because I agree with you, Satish. We thought that was really important to add and make sure that EV stations, but that causes the cost of construction to be more, which they don't absorb whoever they, they pass it on to whoever's gonna rent, buy, whatever. So all these regulations and all these extras we ask for, again, I'm not advocating that we not do them, but I think we need to be cognizant of the fact that then it creates an expense to our residents. And so there is the balance too and the push and pull, you know? How much do you require? How much do we make the developers do, um, that in turn makes it more expensive to live here? So honestly, everything we do, everything we do is a balance. Everything is connected, quite frankly. Every decision we make affects our residents in one way or another and, um, and we're cognizant of that all the time. And I know I do. I worry about that a lot. I worry about what it means for young people that want to live here or the young teacher that's starting out at Morris Elementary, where is she gonna live or where's he, you know, where's he gonna live? So, um, it's, it's all a, a balance and hopefully we get it right. And honestly, I don't know what the right balance is. I don't, you know, we talk about what's the commercial to residential balance in this town? What's the single-family home to apartment balance in this town? I don't, I don't know that there's a right number. And I think whatever it is, that balance changes over time based on who's here. I will tell you, the decisions we make today, we never would have made back in 99 or 1,000 or 2000 and 2001 because it were, it was a different population with different needs. And so we as a council have to constantly reflect what's happening in our town and it, and, uh, as you said, around us as well. And so, um, we're making different decisions today and 10 years from now, council will make even different decisions than we are today because the, 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 you know, the needs and the wants of the community are gonna change.
It's a flow.
Yeah, well.
It's a flow.
It, it's an evolution, that's right. And it's a, you know, and some of the things we do are significantly transformational. I would tell you our downtown, our town center is going to transform this town again in ways that we probably can't comprehend right now. And, and I, I actually think that's exciting, so.
There's one other thing I want to share. We are sort of missing some of that for second home stock. Like, we don't have as diverse a housing stock as I think we would like as a group, as a town. So that's just something, I'm not sure how we can encourage it. I think we're sending signals to the development community that apartments not buy right are gonna be challenging because of resident feedback. But if there's anything we can do to send signals that we want some more homeownership opportunities, I know we can't require it, but that kind of stock that might lend itself to that for families that want to stay in town and not move to Apex or some other place, I think would be good. But, um, I think Satish started with, are there any questions you have for us? Like, do you have anything that you're not sure about what, like, what we're looking for from you? What, do you have any idea about that? I think you said that we love that you pre-vet everything, you're already making things better before they come to us. Do you have any questions about what you think that you need to know from us? Cause that's part of what this is today.
Okay, I mean, anyone?
I just think transparency and open dialogue like this.
Okay.
I mean, more like this.
Yeah, I know.
I think this is.
Good.
I really sincerely do.
Yeah, a couple of town.
But we do not talk, right?
Right, right. I think the interaction is.
Interaction is not.
We're always welcome to see more people.
And to talk about brick, you know, like, the.
Don't talk about brick.
It's all like Rick?
Like Rick. I can't be like Rick for sure. So, um, the guiding documents, especially Morrisville as all-state roads, but CTP is the place where we can use it to our advantage. We tried very hard to push Church Street to a four, four-lane road. We got pushed back and TOD, you know, I was the person, put my foot down and said, do analysis of Church Street before even we go and, you know, vote for that. Came back, Kim Lee-Hahn paid 25, $30,000 just to say, no, it is, you know, it can take the capacity. It does not equate that equation to the residents there. And that is where the rub is for us, you know? I'm not an expert, but when they come up with their numbers and they show all these things, who do I, you know?
Can you, can you resubmit that with support, Michelle? I don't know. I mean, I'm just asking as a question. I don't want to take away from my meaning because I gotta get some sleep tonight. I'm starting to lose my hair. So listen, I just wanted to find out, can they resubmit that? Because I think dialogue with people coming out for that publicly and talking to the same people that review it and writing in might be helpful. I know you guys did a great job. I'm, I'm sure you did.
Are you talking about the Church Street traffic study?
The Church Street study, because, you know, you've got the cricket park there and you've got all this other traffic and everything.
Everything we try.
It's just backing up. It's backing up.
Can I devil's advocate on that though? Cause I, I live right in the same place that you do. If we made that four lanes, what would happen? More people would use that road? Like, I'm not sure that adding additional lanes there, like, I deal with the traffic. I take my kids to school every morning. Like, I deal with the traffic, but I'm not sure that just adding lanes to Church Street is the answer.
I just think looking at a plan, maybe it's not four lanes. Maybe it's three lanes. Maybe it's some other aspect of it. Maybe it's looking at an access north where we are.
We used to have that.
We used to have that, yeah.
We used to have that.
I agree. I wish we still.
I'll tell you what, that would take a big relief, but I'm just saying overall to resubmit them to consider and maybe get feedback back and say, have you ever thought about this?
So with the traffic study, go ahead, Ann, I didn't mean to interrupt.
I, no, I was just gonna say that we, the study came back and I had a hard time with it too. I, I mean, I did, I questioned them for like a long time about this. What the study said was that the intersection is the problem. It's not the number of cars on the road, it's the intersection. And the fact that the traffic backs all the way up is because not enough cars get through the lane because there's no flow on, there's a, the light on Chapel Hill Road. And I, I think that what happened was they talked about it enough that I finally understood what. And I, I think that what happened was they talked about it enough that I finally understood what they were saying. And I agree that it would be really valuable if residents could hear that same thing from experts. But I do think there's some value in all of us being able to explain that too. Like, once there's a McCrimmon flyover and you don't have to stop at that railroad track and you, you know, then Church Street is not going to be that as backed up as it is. Because there's going to be movement and as soon as the light turns green, there's going to be somewhere to go. Like, you're not going to be turning onto a place that's.
Flyover, can I, just a sidebar, I'm sorry. But it, so will you, is Cary still going to control the traffic samples for Morseville?
Oh, I don't know the answer to that, probably, yeah.
They're, they have the network and the computer center that controls it, but they're not controlling it in some diabolical, twisted in the mustache way, which is what it sounds like you're saying.
As far as we know.
I just asked a several questions.
Yeah, I mean, but yeah, all, all the traffic signals in Morseville.
Election's over with, let's get over that, okay? Just get over that part.
So all, all the traffic signals in, in the town of Morseville, by an agreement between the town and Cary, are controlled centrally in downtown Cary.
Thank you so much.
DOT contracts with the town of Cary. Because DOT doesn't want to do it.
And, and just to add to that, we got a five hundred thousand grant for the signification of town of Morseville. That is going to be partnering with town of Cary. And I think Brandon just had this conversation along with TJ. And the only reason we partner with them is because they have, we are surrounded by them. And it is in our best interest that they also understand what we are doing. And from a traffic engineer when I talk to, increasing ten seconds on a traffic line has like three mile effect of other signals.
I know that.
So, so, so it is always better to have that coordination closely.
Can I just say one thing, because?
Do we have a mic problem?
Me?
Steve.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
So you brought up a really good point. It's, it's not always widening roads that solves the problem. You really have to understand what the problem is and then figure out how to best solve the problem. And we have found out, again, this is that balance, we have found out that sometimes just intersection improvements, adding a turn lane solves a lot. And we don't have to build six lane roads all over town. Because the other thing we're trying to do is, is build a walkable community where folks can walk around, can, kids can bicycle ride. And if every, every road is four and six and eight lanes at an intersection, that, 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 that whole idea goes out the window. So it's, we've invested in intersection improvements as well in town, well, in sidewalks and greenways and all of that.
Well, with all that, I think, you know, I want to, if no one has any questions, then I want to just thank Lee and your entire team for giving us opportunity and having this open dialogue. And we will be more than happy to come anytime you guys tell us. It is good informative session even for me and for rest of the council, we could freely talk and.
We should do this a long time.
I mean, I agree, thank you, and we appreciate your time coming, so.
Thank you all very much, thank you.
Is anyone need a break or are we ready to dive in?
Let's go.
Yeah, I was going to tell everybody, I'm going to make this quick, because I don't want to be blamed for Mr. Bain's future hairstyles, so. Sorry, was I not next, Michelle?
Then please proceed.
Okay. Good evening, everyone, I'm Nathan Losinski, your fire chief. I'm here to talk about the updated Wake County multi jurisdiction hazard mitigation plan. One of the things, the reasons why I'm here is I'm our emergency management coordinator for the town. And you'll have to excuse me, my voice has gone, so less than desirable timing. Little bit of back history about where the mitigation plan came from. In nineteen nine, in nineteen eighty-eight, the federal government passed the Stafford Act. And that really authorized two major things. It is the approval, it gives the, the president the authority to approve declarations of emergencies. And it also starts the framework of, of local governments and counties really starting to build that mitigation plan. A little bit of history, before nineteen eighty-eight, we really just worried about response and recovery. We didn't really worry about the whole holistic circle for, for emergency management, which is also mitigation preparedness. Which we're coming to find out is vitally important in, in, in the whole emergency management concept. The federal government strengthened that rule, so in two thousand, they passed the Disaster Mitigation Act. And what that did is, that actually made it a requirement for local governments to have a mitigation act. To get federal funding and some other things. We also in the town use that mitigation plan in a couple of other areas. One reason why I'm in front of you tonight to sort of get your approval to pass that to council is because it's part of our comprehensive plan. The fire department uses a mitigation plan, especially the risk assessment point, part to really kind of identify what our risks are. And we build that in what's called our standard recover, which is our accreditation document. So police does a little bit of the same. So this actually gives, has a broad impact on the town, both from how we look for grants, how we build guiding documents. And then how we communicate to the public on what our risks are, our capacities, and how we're going to respond to them. Two thousand and fifteen is when Wake County kind of built their first plan, we bought into that. Two thousand and nineteen, our plan was brought to you for approval, and we're here back in front of you for two thousand and twenty-four. Real quick, I'm going to try and go through this quickly, this is probably a twelve PowerPoint slide for a three hundred page document. So I'm trying not to get in the weeds, but I'm trying to give you enough information to be educated and informed. So if I don't find that balance at the end, please ask any questions that you have. So real quick on the planning process, Wake County reached out to us with their vendor and they reached out to all municipalities in the county. And was like, we're starting the process of rebuilding the mitigation plan, let's get going. So they engaged all municipalities. We had multiple meetings throughout the year to sort of build that for primary meetings with the stakeholders, the municipal stakeholders. And then we had subsequent meetings to sort of build what our capacity is, and we'll talk about that in a little bit. I want to emphasize throughout the whole process, there was multiple public outreach efforts. There were two of them that were held in person and then there was ongoing static surveys that individuals could fill out throughout the county. And our social media, our comms department shared all of those multiple times. So there was multiple public outreach done from the town in conjunction with Wake County to really build that sort of community input. Furthermore, we had a, we had a citizen rep, so John Frederick from the PSAP and the CERT team, he was on, he was our citizen rep. He attended all of the meetings and gave some good input. As I said, there was the ongoing surveys and then obviously there was a ton of input from our, our town, planning, inspections, stormwater, engineering, fire, police, town manager's office. They all helped build this plan throughout the year. And again, the citizen rep played an integral part to it as well. So Wake County actually already adopted the plan, so they're a little bit ahead of us. It is a little bit of a unique situation where we built the plan and then we go to our elected officials and our boards and say, hey, this is a cool plan, what do you think? Wake County went first, FEMA is currently approving the plan. Ideally, in this whole cycle, they would have already approved it, but they have seventeen, or they have seventeen hundred members in western North Carolina. So they're obviously pretty busy nowadays. So they're trying to approve the plan, but from all intensive purposes, it's a bit of a rhetorical request to FEMA, because the state emergency management already approved it. So FEMA already has the guidelines and, and, and what's needed, so we're not really worried about FEMA not, not approving the plan. As I said, all local governments inside Wake County are adopting it as they have in the past. And then the plan is active for five years. So when we get to the actual Morseville annex, so if you break down the hazard mitigation plan, you really start high level and you say, what is the plan? How is it developed? And then you do a macro risk assessment throughout the whole county, like, you know, all of the different hazards that could potentially happen. The hazard mitigation plan really is for a countywide at the beginning. So they break it down, how is the county capable, the capacity, the risk? So, you know, you look at, you identify the hazards for, for Morseville, which is, these are, these are FEMA designated hazards. They're already, like, these are the ones we have to write to. And there's some that had been added since two thousand and nineteen. Cyber threat, obviously the infectious disease has been added for obvious reasons. So you identify a hazard and then what's next in an individual annex is you say, okay, well, what does that really mean from a county's perspective? And then a morsel perspective, like, what is, just because we have a hazard that might happen to us, doesn't mean we have a high risk for it. And we'll get to that in a second. And then you break down our capacity to respond to that. And remember, this plan is kind of a broad macro level response concept for a capacity. When you get into our guiding documents like Morseville, the fire department, the police department, we get into the macro, to micro level of how well we can respond. So my point being is this mitigation plan is really kind of a really broad county-led perspective. To my point about, you know, just because you have a hazard doesn't necessarily mean you have a risk. We're not going to have landslides, respectfully. So that's a hazard, but it's not necessarily a risk. So this kind of breaks down what our, both our hazards are and then kind of like the risk that it can happen to us. We do have a few dams in town that actually have the risk of, of, of breaching. It's odd that Morseville does have them, but we have about four or five of them that, that do have the potential. So then you get, you, you identify your, you do a risk assessment and then you sort of get into, okay, well, how are you going to mitigate those risks? And that's where you get into the strategies. So FEMA has, FEMA has this kind of framework that municipalities and counties can use, which is you get the mitigation strategies and you have to define what the goals are. And they're, and they're obvious goals, public health, you know, environmental save. Nowadays, it's vulnerability, we have a vulnerability component to it. So there's a vulnerability sort of assessment inside a hazard mitigation plan. So then you, you take this broader approach like, these are the goals you want to accomplish with your mitigation strategies. And then you kind of bucket those into categories that you're going to put those strategies in. And these are also FEMA-driven prevention, which is obvious, property protection, emergency services, that's pretty obvious, structural projects. Natural resource protection, which is a new kind of component, the environment now goes into the risk assessment. You have property, people, and now an environment, environmental component to that risk assessment. Which is, which is, which is good, because this shows you the progressive nature of the mitigation plan over the five years. And then the public information and outreach, and that's really driven by, like, you know, we use Everbridge to communicate to the public in case there's an emergency. So making sure you're communicating to the public in a broad outreach and making sure you're communicating to everybody in the community where they need it. Including, one of the things that we have recently done is our language access plan. That clearly is a mitigation effort, because we're starting to communicate with the public in different languages from a public emergency perspective. So you break those, you break those mitigation strategies down into actions. So these are the sort of actions that the town has identified from a broad, high level perspective. And they're not necessarily all of them that we can, we can go towards, but the actions that the, the, the internal departments have identified that we can put in this document. Because remember, this also supports our grant potential. So anytime we want to apply for mitigation grants, which stormwater, like, they would love to do stormwater grants. Because, you know, that's where a lot of the flooding and that kind of happens. So these are, these are sort of the actions that we want to take. So some of these are rollovers too, so to reduce the cyber attacks by transitioning, transitioning to staff to encrypt the laptops. You're going to see one in there about more cloud usage. These are ongoing, so they're not necessarily sometimes an endpoint to it. Just because you accomplished it, technology improves and that grants might be out there for furthering whatever, whatever that grant is. So some of these are ongoing. You can see number three is, 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 is infrastructure improvements surrounding stormwater. Obviously, stormwater and flooding is something that's always going to find yourself in a mitigation plan. And then sort of, so for an example, building a new facility, that builds our capacity to respond, because Public Works has an enormous responsibility inside emergency management. So giving them the capacity to have either a backup B O C or, or additional resources there. So building those structures are also a mitigation strategy. So as we said, the mitigation is required by our local governments to provide funding. All of, all of the counties, all of the municipal counties, all of the municipalities in the county are actually going through the approval process now. And then steps forward is, I'm here to ask after any questions, do you guys approve the resolution to send it to council? There'll be a public hearing, which I think Michelle has already put out. And then council adoption hopefully on the December tenth. So that was a really quick, really quick synopsis of a three hundred page document. And we can get into the weeds all you want. Questions?
Thank you.
Sorry about my voice, it's struggling.
That's fine, um, do, do we have any questions, Rick?
And we can, and it's not questions, or you can, clarifications, we can talk through it. You got just curiosity questions? You guys are paying me, I'm here for you.
So she is our designated question asker.
Okay.
I'm sorry, am I, are you looking for feedback on the actual document?
So I'm looking for feedback, I'm looking.
That was my.
Yeah, I'm looking for feedback, I'm looking for questions.
So I'm looking at the, so I read it as a document, so I'm looking from a technical standpoint of the document. So I'm in the terrorism section on page two sixty-five. And so from a technical standpoint, when I'm reading through the document, there's a statement on page two sixty-six that calls out the name of a political organization that identifies hate groups.
Yes.
Which is not terrorism. And it's not referenced correctly, and it's the only organization that's mentioned throughout the document. So from a technical standpoint, that should not be in there.
Okay. I'll let FEMA know. Well, it's just, it's hard, because we actually discussed that, were you in? Sorry, not to call on Michelle, but we were in a meeting and we really struggled from a countywide perspective whether that was appropriate to actually put that in there. And, and so one of the things, when you build a multi-jurisdictional, multiple, multiple entity document is, there's so many stakeholders. The county, like, it's so, it's very difficult and we just, we struggled with that holistically, so yeah.
Because I read through the notes and I saw where somebody else had brought it up. And it's not so much the idea of the hate group, it's how you're referencing.
Yeah.
That the organization that is classifying it, because you start the document saying there is globally no definition for terrorism.
Right.
And then you end with an organization that says these are hate crimes, which isn't even falling under terrorism.
Right, and I think.
I would just say, if somebody's reviewing the document, add my comments to that.
Okay.
Nothing else is referenced like that. And if it's, if it is, it should be a footnote, but virtually everything on the three hundred pages doesn't have a name of an organization other than the graphics.
I appreciate you making it to two ninety-six. That's, you get a star for that. Sure, I will, I will refer, I will, I will let, I'll let Wake County and the state know. That was a really hotly debated topic.
Because of how it's written technically, so this whole document is written, it's not the content of it, of something about hate speech, it's how the name of the organization is written in here. Because all of this would then have to be referenced. So from a reference standpoint, all of the background information in here isn't referenced by who provided that information or the charts. So just by listing it, and it's not terrorism. So there was a paragraph added that seems to just been dropped in there after we talk about enemy attacks, biological agents, chemical terrorism, explosives, radiological. And then at the end, there's an organization that defines hate groups and is listed as an expert, and it doesn't fit under terrorism. So it doesn't fit under terrorism, and if you were going to make the comment, then it shouldn't have the name of the organization, it should be. The name of the organization in the back of the group, if you wanted to leave that paragraph in.
Yeah.
Without doing all the rest of the information. I'm sorry, a technical detail.
No, that's, yeah, I asked, I asked for questions, I'm good, I'm, so.
That's all I.
Oh, that's it, okay. Ken, any questions?
Nothing?
So I mean, it's difficult, because she is very detail oriented and.
Yeah.
A very technical writing person, so.
I thought, I thought there was great information, I learned so much reading the whole thing, I was like, oh my goodness, so detailed.
It's, it's wonderful.
I won't claim that I read the whole thing, but I did go through certain parts and looked at the parts that pertain to like town of Morseville and everything, so it's kind of.
Yeah.
That was kind of interesting.
And I, well, I like how they consolidate a lot of the information, sort of, especially in the risk assessment, because a lot of it you might not know. I mean, I like the vulnerability component that they added, so they did a really good job of adding a lot of things this year, and it's really, really in-depth, so. Actually, and I, and I would tell you that, if you look at the capabilities of, of the, that's listed, that the Town of Morsville has in that document, I would suggest to you that they're far better than that in our guiding documents, where we can get into a micro risk assessment for how we actually do things in the town, not a broad countywide perspective. So, but it's, it actually demonstrates from a countywide perspective, we have a ton of capacity in the, in the county to really respond to whatever we need to, so. Well, if you have no questions, Michelle.
Were you going to go through the rest of the...
Oh yeah, I can go through, oh yeah, sure, absolutely. The rest of it was really just, I can go through the annex, sure.
Well, I mean, I didn't know if you were planning, I'm sorry.
No, I can, absolutely. So, I, we brought out the annex just to your point, so you don't have to read 300 pages. But this kind of just dives into the actual risk assessment, and to build the risk, you kind of, kind of have to build what the community profile is. And again, to your guys' point, it's great information, things you might not know, tax value, I mean, things that you just kind of collectively might think out there, clearly identifies, and this is where we love, that the county does a risk assessment, because it further supports our data in our accreditation models, because it, you know, when you can reference counties, and they've done a separate, and it aligns with ours.
And going back to that, did they purposely block out all the streets in town so that they wouldn't be identified specifically where these things were, or was that just...
My opinion, it's probably because it's just, it would overload the map. It's for the visibility of the maps for the consumer, the consumption of the map. I mean, we can probably tell you those buildings right now. And, but I mean, that's a good point. There was some talk about putting some of these documents to, like, a storyboard, or some sort of ArcGIS integration, so you can kind of dive into it a little bit more. There's our dams in town, which is kind of funny. Not, they're not funny, but the fact that there's dams in town. Flooding risks, so this kind of goes through those, those, those hazards that we have, and they identify, they're building, what type of risk does the town have associated with those hazards? And this is just the data to support, sort of, all that information above, that's in the, in the, in the upper part of the document. So wildfire, probably 10 years ago, we had a much more, what's called a urban wildland interface, that's obviously diminishing dramatically, so. And then, so this is just further going through all of those sort of risks. So these are the mitigation strategies that we talked about, and one of the things that you'll see over to the left is, when I was discussing the different buckets that you can put them in, they're referencing, that's kind of what there are, is, that's the action number, is associated with the bucket. And then that's the county's already signed resolution. And then that's the resolution associated with our councils and yours, recommendation to accept it. Pretty easy, that part was.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Any other comments or questions?
Mr. Bean, you ain't got nothing? Nothing at all?
Got nothing for you.
Well, we'll take that.
No? So then, if that's the case, would someone like to make a motion to approve this resolution? Or recommend approval, sorry?
I'll make a motion. I recommend motion to approve Resolution 2024-363-0, Resolution authorizing Wake County Hazard mitigation plan 2024 update.
Do we have a second? A motion second, all in favor? Aye. Carries unanimously, thank you.
Thank you, now I can say I have presented to BCD, something I've never done. Thank you all.
Okay, so we can go back to 8B. So are we, do you have little slips, like we've done in the past? Is there anyone, I will be happy to continue as the chair. Is anyone interested in...
Before me, Michelle, do we have enough people present to have a vice?
We do have a four.
Yes, we do.
I mean, the, the board is five members, and with two alternates, so we have one alternate tonight.
Just to know, I'm an alternate.
I would say the only issue withholding is you do make a recommendation to the town council, so this is scheduled to go to town council on December 10th. If you were to miss the December 10th meeting, you wouldn't technically have new officers until into next year, because they are annual appointments.
So do you, do you want that wait for full? Is that your, your answer?
You're interested in vice president still?
Are you still interested in being vice chair?
Yes.
That's what you are now, yeah.
So yeah, we were going to follow, if we could, kind of the same procedure as the last couple years, start with nominations for chair, we need a first and a second, so take nominations, and then once we're through any nominations, I do have ballots to hand out. Please ignore, in my preparation to fill in for Brooke last minute, I printed out vice chair for both, but we will do chair first and vice chair second. So just ignore that part of it, please, and ask for, for your grace on that. But if we have nominations for chair, we could, we could start.
Nominate Lee for chair, nominate Ken for vice chair.
Well, let's do chair first.
Okay.
Do we have a second? No second?
Is there a second for the nomination for Lee?
Oh, like, second, yes.
Oh, yes, yes, yeah.
Any other nominations?
Very none.
I'm going to hand out the ballots, this may be very quick.
Yeah.
She'll probably skip two.
If you could, please.
Well, she can get us enough to do everything, so there's...
Right there, I'm sorry. Whichever body is your...
Just cross out the vice.
Yeah.
Okay, so, recommendation is for Lee Linkson to continue as chair. And do we have any nominations for vice chair?
Nominate Ken for vice chair.
Do you have a second?
I'll second that.
Yep. Any other nominations?
Some of us already have some. We already got extras, so. Oops.
Okay, so, probably surprising, Ken has been nominated for vice chair. So we will floor those recommendations onto town council.
Congratulations.
All right, we can move on to the meeting schedule. Anyone have any issues with the schedule that was published, which is essentially the same exact timing every, as now? So I will entertain a motion to approve the meeting schedule for 2025. Actually, those do say 2024, but...
We will correct, we will correct that.
But the dates are correct, because...
All the dates are 2025 days.
Right, they're the 2025, because I've looked through on my calendar, because I have a recurring note setup, and they all align, so.
We'll definitely correct that.
Go ahead. Approve or accept this time? Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, that motion carries unanimously, thank you. And now we have staff comments from the large staff that we have here tonight.
Okay, well, I will move on to the staff newsletter, and we haven't met in a little bit, so there is some more to go over than normal. First thing that I did want to share with everyone that, that you heard tonight was that the town has hired its first economic development director, so we're really excited about that with the type of development and industry that we're seeing in Morsville. We're really on the national and international stage at this point, and just a great new position to be added. Tiffany McNeil is our new economic development director, she's been with us for about a month now, so we are just really, really excited about that. In terms of new development applications that have come in, we did receive an application for a new coffee shop on Morsville Parkway. Town council has also, they approved the town center development agreement, if you weren't aware of that, that was approved back in September, and they did also approve the HSNC rezoning application. So both of those had gone to this board first. In terms of, you know, some of the other things that the department is working on and that are under review, back in 2022, the town did receive a grant, it was a Safe Streets for All grant that looks at pedestrian safety, kind of, at a high level. Central Pines is leading that effort, but they did, that project was recently kicked off, so really looking to prepare two safety, safety action plans. One for the Town of Morsville, and that's going to serve as a template for suburban communities, and then they're also working on a plan for Broadway, Sanford, and Lee County that's going to serve as a template for rural communities. So excited to be a part of that effort, and that's just starting to kick off right now. In this year's budget, town council did also approve funds to reevaluate the Smart Shuttle, so we are starting that process right now. We issued an RFQ, and we are now in the consultant selection process. The idea being that we just celebrated the three-year anniversary of the Smart Shuttle, want to look at the shuttle service, see what's working well, what we can improve on, and part of that is whether or not we want it to remain as an on-demand system, or potentially change to some sort of hybrid system or fixed route system. So that will be part of that study. It is, we anticipate the study kicking off in December with engagement, public engagement beginning early 2025, so look out for that. And then, the rezoning application for Park West, that is still before town council. It was continued to the December 10th meeting. Right now, it looks like that meeting is just going to be a check-in, with action more likely to occur in January. But that is all I have.
Thank you. Oh, that coffee shop, is that going beside the bank?
Yes, right, there's...
It's facing the, yeah, yeah, like, right, yeah, there's that new apartment complex that's right there, yeah.
Yep.
Never heard of that coffee, Brian.
I have not heard of them previously.
So then, I guess we are on to board comments. Kristin, do you have any comments? Ken?
I just thought the joint meeting of the council was really productive, and I think we should all board.
I'll agree. Chris?
Veterans Day on Monday.
That's true, coming up. Rick? That's it, thank you, everyone who's still here. I will entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Motion to adjourn?
Do we have a second? All in favor? Aye, we are adjourned, thank you.
And have a good Thanksgiving, everyone.
Yes.
Have a good night.